That close for that long. Give me some extra.
Good morning, boardroom. We are recording. It's 10:00 AM.
Okay, are we ready? Yes. Ready? I'll call the, uh, the directors' special meeting to order. You have a roll call, please.
Director Meyer Hoffman. Director Griffith.
President.
Director Duff.
President.
Vice President Sewell.
Here.
And President Martin.
Here.
Thank you. We have corn.
Input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board pertaining to items of this agenda. These limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. California Government Section 54954. Do we have any members of the public that wish to address the board?
President Martin, we do. Jan Pai is here to make a public comment.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jan.
Hi, I am liaisons from the council to your board, just as Mr. Martin is liaisons to the city council. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to make my address to Mr. Mayor Hoffman and Ms. Duff. A long time. Thank you. A long time ago. Um, our, our board and your board did not get along. Staff were bright enough to make us get along. We have to. We, and one of the things that we did, we noticed that we need to collaborate with respect to streets. And in doing so, we were able to share costs. So with that became the liaisons. Um, Mr. Mayor Hoffman, you may remember that, and you and I have had a long relationship. Ms. Duff, we, um, discussed things during the campaign, but now that is over. But I need to get to know you, just like I know all of your board members. So simply, I want to address to you, um, Mr. Mayor Hoffman and Ms. Duff, that I look forward to not just knowing you, but liking you. And I'm wishing for both of you, and I will see you not just at this, but also at special district meetings. So I'm wishing for both of you, um, very good luck with your new endeavors. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
President Martin, there is not.
We're going on item four, fiscal year 2022-23 budget review and discussion. Martin, you want to kick things off?
Sure, I will. I'll, I'll briefly, uh, start things off here, and then I'm going to hand it to Mr. Seahan. Um, this is the moment, actually, in some way that we've been waiting for, that really started over, well, over a decade ago. Um, it's a moment that we have meticulously prepared for. I think for the new directors, I want you to know that this has been hundreds and hundreds of meetings, much of what we're going to discuss. There are two major presentations, actually, or two parts to the budget review this year. Uh, of course, the budget, and secondly, we will explain the interim financing, uh, proposal that we have, uh, presented previously to the board. Uh, and I do also want to present a couple of informational items that have been requested, uh, previously. Um, getting back to our regional plant, um, and this project, we have been very fortunate to be awarded grant funding to cover most all the costs in that. In fact, I think it's safe to say 100% of the cost. And we are working every day to be sure that this project moves along flawlessly as possible. Um, you know, there are many moving parts, and we have been very responsive to every request of the state. And the agencies involved with this have asked of us. Uh, the water reclamation facility for the, that we are using to build, or this, this project covers, um, has many advantages, uh, besides just providing additional treatment. Uh, it is expandable to cover much of the future growth that we expect to serve. Uh, it is designed to be capable of going to a higher level of treatment, uh, which a lot of the plants aren't these days. That will be required. I can assure you, we will have to go to advanced treatment. Uh, it will provide treatment to the commercial area in the Indian and I-10 area, which I got here 18 years ago was a badly needed requirement in that area. Um, but it will, it will help that future commercial growth in that area and the economy. It will provide groundwater protection to the area not, not reasonably possible right now. It will expand coverage to the communities we expect to serve. Um, it will provide reuse water that's predicted, uh, and necessary for future growth. Um, and it will actually, some of the numbers will actually say that it will be much more valuable than imported. It will allow temporary flows, uh, to be cut off the Horton plant for operational requirements. It will extend the life of the Horton plant by there are just many reasons that this need to get moving on it, uh, and while we have been. Um, this has been a long journey, uh, and a good outcome. And so today, we're going to discuss all these items. Mr. Seahan, you want to up your presentation and
Yes, thank you, General Manager Wollum. On this uh, the, my goal today is going to be to present you with uh, in terms with a few of the updates say, uh, on where we stand and how we go into the rest of the year. Um, that's the, that's the goal, and, um, please, if you have any questions about the presentation, we'll stop and have a discussion. Starting on the first H O B presentation. Just the introduction. Um, on the first page, typical yearly process, and that's going to be on the second page of your, uh, what you have in front of you. Um, proposition for California Government Code is what, uh, triggers the district preparing a, uh, annual budget. Uh, it gives us the information that we needed to what our guidelines are every year, and we did present that information during, uh, June, um, budget presentation. Um, just the background, because it is required for the district so we're not spending ratepayers money, uh, however we see fit, but how guidelines prepared, that were decided on, um, forward. So we begin, um, uh, following year's budget, which covers a fiscal year of July 1st through June 30th. Uh, in March is when we begin to, uh, prepare the numbers, and that's basically the employees responsible for each of the budgets goes through what they spent in the last year, um, in the, in previous years, and what they have upcoming, um, just to make sure that they have the backup for those numbers. We present a board workshop in June, followed by the study session, and finally, with board meeting, regular board meeting in June. And we come back in January with updates as to where we stand, whether we need a answer, whether we need to make or any other capital projects that need to be brought to your attention. Uh, the 2023 budget assumptions, uh, that we had, we had no base or commodity rate increases, uh, no service fee increases. Uh, we had several, uh, new connections to the system for water and sewer accounts, uh, which is what triggered the increase in revenue that we'll see. Um, and of course, the major topic of discussion throughout this presentation is going to be the what triggers the current numbers in terms of the capital project. It's the largest in the report, and it's also what's driving our, uh, uh, non-operating revenue for the year, which is a significant uh, in the expenses, we have, uh, we had a new wastewater worker position, uh, required. Now that we have the regional plant coming we needed to start training those employees to be sure that we're going to meet, uh, the costs and the of the regional but we implemented a classification and compensation study. Uh, the board approved, uh, for the district to go out and, um, verify where the employees, not only job-wise, their duties, but also where they stood in salaries and how competitive we were well as a, a district. This was in May. It was completed in May. Um, and just a little bit of background, we were becoming a training district for other districts in the valley. A lot of employees would come in, get hired, um, get the training. After a few months, they realized there was an opening with another district, and sure enough, they would a lot of the times, it was a difference of 50 cents on the, on the rate, um, and we could, we didn't afford to continue to do employees and, um, also for the community. We were losing a lot of talent. Hourly rate. Um, we also implemented the employee request, which was part of the class and comp study of certification pay. Uh, a lot of employees have certifications above and beyond their, uh, required, um, job title, and so we wanted to make sure they were comfortable as well, because of the talent of the employees here. We have an increase in operating expenses related to the inflation. You'll see it in your own pocketbook. Uh, that's because we do need On the next page, this is where I'm going to be going into a little bit more detail on the operating revenues. We budgeted 20 mil, uh, 20.7 million, an increase from the previous year, uh, of 1.7 million, primarily again for the, um, new accounts that were connected during the last, uh, fiscal year, uh, in addition to delinquent accounts, late fees disconnects. As you may remember, the state had a moratorium on accounts that were not paying, um, for water bill. It go out, uh, when the state provided, uh, funds, uh, through the arrears program, we were, we secured a little over 1.3 million dollars for the district and ratepayers to help them, um, uh, to pay their bills. However, we could not shut them off regardless of what their status was. So we accumulated a lot of late fees. In order for to get back up, we were, uh, forgiving a lot of those late fees, which was the main thing we could uh, sewer fees, uh, also 7.3 million, um, and the of 195,000. Meter connections and service charges, again, uh, 2.9 million dollars with, with an increase of 85,000. Water consumption charge, 9.2 million dollars. Uh, and again, this is primarily to those new connections. Now going into the expenses, operating expenses in the, for the fiscal year 2023 were 18.8 million dollars, with an increase, uh, over the previous year of 1.6 million. Salaries and benefits, as you know, is the, uh, most cost in terms of operating expenses, and that was 8.4 million dollars after the class and comp, uh, had been addition of the new, um, wastewater position. That was a $200,000 increase. Floyd request for the certification pay of 30,000. Um, other expenses, you can once again, you're, you're seeing that as part of your own. Um, it's Southern California Edison rates, we have to respond and also increase our budget. Increase in expenses and reductions made by department heads, we did, uh, minimize, um, for 241,000. Social fees to acquire new loans, that is what, uh, we were making sure we were ready for the, uh, either a line of credit, an installment purchase agreement, or a loan to get the, uh, district going through with cash flows. Are very, are, are going to be needed, and we'll discuss here a little later. Non-operating budget summary, non-operating revenue went up 28 million. Uh, the majority of that was the grant, uh, for the regional plant. Of that property taxes, uh, we budgeted 2 point, uh, million dollars with an increase of 582,000. Uh, home prices went up, so there's property taxes based on the the value. Backup and front footage charges, these are the new connections to the system that, uh, we must charge for, uh, customers to connect. 844,000 with a 227,000 increase. Uh, and then finally, the grant. At the time of the regular budget in June, we did not have the final agreement with the state signed. Therefore, the previous agreement that we did have in, in hand, which stated we were going to, uh, get, uh, half of the, uh, cost in grant and half of the cost of the low-interest loan from the state, um, is what we had, and therefore, we, uh, budgeted 25 million dollars in, the grant, which included, uh, the M2, uh, the command line from the Horton numbers again, we, they were very, uh, early at, at that stage, so we were booking what we knew, um, at that point in time. So one of the biggest changes you'll see is part of this grant being increased, uh, because it is a reimbursable grant, which means the district has to spend the funds first, then request, uh, reimbursement from the state, and then they reimburse us for those costs. Uh, and there is a timing issue there of when we will be collecting those funds. What is that, that? Well, Ryan, it's it, they, we're finding they're very busy as well, um, and they are responding to some of our questions, but it is taking a little bit longer than it, um, and, and we knew that was going to happen. That's why we were trying to plan for that, uh, issue.
Um, I was hoping to see Mr. Ledbetter today, and I guess I may have to ask. Is he here? Okay, great, great. Um, when we get to the point to discuss the grant a little more in detail, um, I do have some questions regarding what you just mentioned.
The workshop, this, we
Up to you guys. I don't know, I don't want to interrupt your train of thought.
Absolutely not. That we, that's what we're here for today. This is your chance for us to give you those answers. That's
Okay. Okay.
Steve, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Hi, I'm Amber. Nice to meet you.
Good morning.
Um, I assume that it's safe to say that you're very knowledgeable and familiar with all of the terms of the grant and the conditions that are held within it?
Yes.
Are you comfortable in the Um, as of today, to the best of your knowledge, have all the required submitted forms and uh, requests to the state been provided on time according to the frame of the grant?
Yes.
And you'll be able to provide me copies of those reimbursement requests, progress reports, final budget forms, and the request for the 10% upfront payment?
Yeah, we haven't submitted any reimbursement requests yet, uh, because we're waiting on the final approval, but we have the application forms, the final budget approval, the, um, agreement. We have all of those documents in hand.
So in the grant where it says specifically that after the signature, we were, had so many days, I believe it said 30, to submit all the work done, reimbursement requests for work done prior to the signing, and then 90 days, which would have been September, to submit for the others. What, what am I missing? Is that contingent on something else?
So, yes, uh, let me explain that process a little bit. Um, there's, it's a two-step process where they approve your application and give you a funding agreement. That was completed in August and approved by the board in August of, uh, last year, and approved by the state board in September of last year. And the second step, so that allocates that the district is available to receive 68 million in grants, but the second step is we have to prepare a final budget approval form just for the current treatment plant phase of work. And we submit all the bid documents and the RFIs through the bidding phase. We submit the, uh, payment schedules. We submit all that information, and then the state reviews that, and then once they approve that form, they say, okay, we agree that you took all the necessary steps. You have your, um, um, Davis Bacon weight requirements in place. You bid the project properly. Then we can actually begin the reimbursement process. So once that FBA, that final budget approval form is approved, that sets the clock that you're referring to for us to get our reimbursements in on that, um, uh, 30-day and 90-day window.
So the, the form that says June 2nd is not correct?
We submitted that ahead of, so in May, um, we submitted the FBA form ahead of having the agreement in place, just to make sure we were ahead of the game. Um, but again, the state didn't start reviewing that until November of this year. Um, so we have, the district Sorry, it's hard to hear the room. Go ahead.
I know. Uh, Steve, uh, Brian wanted to in, insert some information here. Go ahead, Brian. So in the contract, the fine contract, it was signed by both parties. That's typically where the 90 days starts. There's some other things in that document to talk about what Steve was saying.
What I got had no signatures, only the
No, no, I, I said yesterday.
Oh, okay. I thought this is what I printed yesterday. Okay.
So, so the schedule's still the same, but what Steve was referencing that we're trying to get approval is the first step. What was that called? The finance?
Final budget approval. Yeah.
I know, but yeah, the FBA in there, it said it was complete, but it's never been approved by the state, and they didn't start reviewing it till November. So the schedule that they have in there was really based on assuming that that was it was approved by staff, but they're still reviewing it for completeness.
And we have documents from the state saying that they've received that timely, and there's no talk of potential deferment or any timeline like that? Okay.
It's important for them to get this money up to our, their constituents as it to receive it.
Okay. And so on these, this, this estimated timeline, then all these dates are going to change based on the new, the new
As we go through the process, and just past experience in dealing with the state and grants, you one of the things Steve is working through right now, trying to make sure that everything that we aspire to this is going to be able to be accepted. Have two other phases, as you see in the schedule there, that they're expecting to see other financial with
Yeah.
We have a lot of different opportunities to change this.
Okay.
Flexibility that's worded in there and such. So when you look at the schedule, that was as of when it was first drafted, maybe as early as back in March. We're still working through all of that to make sure everything gets and after everything's approved, have the ability to go back if something changes on our end, to go back and ask for more. The things that we've had in some of the conservation things in our earlier projects with the was that we asked for additional funds based on the way we were actually doing the sharing with the, with the residents, and they approved that as well. So there's flexibility all through the project, as long as we because remember, this isn't the only project the state has either.
Of course.
So their staff also changes certain things because they make decisions other parts of the state or other, the other projects. So it's an evolving document. So why it is, so can, I guess we understand that because we've gone through it so often, but your questions are valid. Hey, are we missing a deadline? The deadlines are going to move all over only because it's the state and they're a big organization, and sometimes they can't get back to us and stay on their own schedule.
Providing us with updates on that timeline, because even on the very, like, it was asking for the phase three before it wanted the phase two, which didn't make much sense to me. So I was just curious as to how that even got signed when the date seemed to be wrong. It was saying the phase two final plans would do September 1, 2022, but the phase three would do August 1 of 2022. Same thing with that.
When did we first put in the clean water fund?
The original application was submitted in 2019.
So does that, so we have been working with the state for over three years to get this, and it's changed in complexity from the 16 we talked about all the way up to now the 68. That's the level of change that we've had to accept, if you will, to make sure that we got the grant funding. Matter of fact, we started construction before it was signed, because we had verbal approvals and things like that. So there's a lot of trust that goes both ways, because in reality, it benefits both the state and ourselves. So I appreciate you going through the contract the way you are and making sure we're staying on task, but we have to accept a little from its perspective, that we know the state's not going to go bankrupt. They're always going to be able to fund us, and they have the bonding, that they have the money available, and they want to get it to us.
I, you, you, this is kind of typical.
No, I, I understand it's typical with working with the state. I also understand that the grant clearly states this is not a guarantee, and that anytime that they don't meet the budget, and if they haven't received the funds, they can cancel the whole thing with no liability to us, which isn't what was presented to me over and over and to the public, that this was a done deal and a guaranteed thing, when it clearly states in here multiple times that it's not.
But from a, from a language perspective, you understand why those terms, why that is
Right, and I understand with their $3 billion deficit right now in their budget, that they probably are having trouble assigning promised payments to people.
They also had a $70 billion surplus last year.
Yeah.
And that's what created a lot of the programs that we're now taking advantage of.
Yeah, this is
Why they have a yearly surplus, a yearly deficit, they still have plenty of money that goes into this program, and technically, it's allocated into this fund outside of the Now, they can always pull it, pull it back, but we know that they had $75 billion last year.
So then, when we submitted the FBA, we were able to prove that we were able to handle all costs connected with this project and be able to pay all the bills through the whole project with or without receiving any of the grant money. But on the last board meeting, you told us come February, we were going to be out of funds, which is why we're talking about the line of credit. Can we kind of get into those details as to what changed and why it seems like maybe we aren't as prepared to pay all of our bills?
We can go out and ask for additional in this plan together was $16 million grant, and then it was $48 million, or excuse me, dollars of, uh, revolving grant. That loan is what we could still grant itself, you're talking about is guaranteed, but we can still go back and get the loan. Because they said they were going to pay all grants, the loan option went away. So when you're talking about, we can always go out to, we always can go out and borrow for that. We have the available debt capacity. That's what we talked about setting ourselves up whenever we were to have the bonding capacity to do those. So as far as going out and borrowing for it, that's what we're really talking about in the short term.
When we were saying, when we were saying that, we said, okay, if the grant doesn't work, we can borrow the money, have the funding capacity. Have much debt on our rates. Pretty good position to be.
Things I think is important to add here, that we need that plant regardless of whether or not we get grant or not, because we otherwise don't, eh, eh, and we get the, the loan. Either, either, either work and get the grant, which I think we've done 99% of it, and right that there are some language in there. Uh, we didn't have really much, much choice, and we have to proceed with turns out that for foreseen circumstance, we have to go with the loan process, and so be it. It's not something that we say, well, gee, we'd like to have a waste treatment facility. Have to have it. Has to be built.
We can go, we can fund it
Different way.
Get a grant, great, which is what we thought, and they normally had that language in. Probably had day 50 or 60. Main reason why we want to get a loan is we to date, over 17 million dollars of the district's funds, uh, to begin the, the project, um, with the intent. And so eventually, yeah, we, we're going to get refunded. Another main reason why we need that cash flow. In fact, the state has a bridge program, but we evaluated several different ways to do this financing. Uh, and came out with the way that saved the district.
And there's no indication, Mr. Ledbetter, from the state as to how much longer for them to approve the FBA? And am I correct in stating that if they were to approve it, we then could immediately request the ten percent of our loan, of our, of our grant to be sent immediately? Did I understand that correctly in the grant?
My, my phone call with the state in middle of December, they said they expect to approve the FBA this month in January twenty twenty-three. From there, we can submit a reimbursement request for all costs incurred from the construction eligibility date of October twenty twenty-one. So, all costs incurred throughout twenty twenty-two, we can submit for in the first initial reimbursement package we submit to the state and recoup all that funding that the district's already expended at, at that time.
So, the dates on the first page of the grant are also wrong? Is that correct? Because it says here that the work start date was December first of twenty twenty-one and the construction start date was May of twenty twenty-two. So, if we have construction expenses prior to May of twenty twenty-two, according to this, then those would be not reimbursable.
So, the state sets the date that you're allowed to spend money for construction and that was October of twenty-one. So, regardless of when we started construction, we can bill for anything after October twenty twenty-one. So, to your point, we issued the notice to proceed to the, we signed the agreement with the contractor December of twenty-one. We issued the notice to proceed in March of twenty-two and we broke ground in April of twenty-two. So, we didn't really incur costs related to construction from the contractor until, you know, starting in April of twenty-two, which was in the eligibility date for reimbursement. Any staff time over that period can also be, we can seek reimbursement for that as well.
Which is what, we'll go back to twenty-one, right?
Every reason that phone is cutting out every twenty minutes. Everybody's a little bit delayed trying to fill in the twenty-second gaps. We're trying to work through the technical difficulties, but right now, it's good enough that everybody is able to pick it up. So, we apologize for.
Director Duff, Director Duff, I do see that the cover page says eligible work start December of twenty-one, but we have an email that said it was October twenty-one, but we didn't spend any money in that two-month window. So, to, I don't think that really matters. We didn't really incur costs until twenty twenty-two, but we were still eligible as shown on the agreement as of December first twenty-one.
But, but construction, I guess I'm still a little confused. So, the construction date start of May one, which is different than the work start of December one, twenty-one, was actually October first for both? Of twenty-one?
Yes.
According to your email?
Yeah.
Okay.
For your background information, staff has been working on preparing the reimbursement request. So, as soon as. We'll be ready for that. We'll have it submitted.
Do you guys have a copy of this document right here that she's referring?
Sure.
Okay.
Send the email.
It just concerns me because if we had, if, I'm, I'm assuming that there's going to be an amendment to this form then if by email it was agreed to, to change those dates to October because it was very clear that there had to be signed amendments for any of those dates to change.
It was probably backwards. The email which started that conversation was through October, but nothing got actually done until September of twenty-one. And that's what actually started the. To the clock. What I'm, from where I'm here, but.
I'm still really fuzzy on what was legitimately legally agreed to by the state as far as those dates. Because if it is October twenty-one for both, great. If it isn't, then we lost April through May of twenty-two in getting reimbursed.
There was no actual construction done during that time, construction truly begun.
Right, but if this date's correct, being it couldn't start till May one, then we lost all of the reimbursement for that. So, okay. Thank you. I think that's it for the grant questions right now.
Director Duff, if I may, I think you bring up a very good point, but we've been advised that anything, any cost incurred after the eligible work start date is reimbursable.
I would love it if you could forward that communication to me just for my own peace of mind. I would love to be able to read what the state said.
We can do that.
Sorry about that feature.
No, perfect. It, it plays into what's coming next in the presentation.
It's signed, it's, once it's signed by the director and the water board, then it goes to staff and that's where the staff change. If you will. Yes, from our perspective, we've done this enough that we feel comfortable. Yeah, the risk from our perspective, but I understand someone coming in. For I and not having as much trust as we do. Security standpoint, I understand.
No, not on the grant. Thank you.
So, now, I'm going to move on to the comparing where we started twenty twenty-three fiscal year to where we are today in terms of the budget itself. We are, the employees are requesting a couple of items. I'm not going to focus anything in detail here. It's pretty straightforward. It's pretty much a one-to-one, they request an expense to revenues. And then I'll go into detail as to what those items actually were. The next page, non-operating budget, is the, where most of the changes did happen. And you can see the grant from twenty-five million dollars to forty-two million dollars in the current year. And what was budgeted was not the entire grant because, as you know, we can only request what we expense. This is what's expected to be expensed through the rest. That's what we are saying. It's earned, therefore, we're going to book it as a receivable come June thirtieth and set it up in the system as, as revenue as well until we collect the monies from the state, reduce the receivable and screw it up at that point. It also changes the numbers in the bottom from the loan proceeds of thirty-three million dollars to twenty-five. Again, the regional plant was not the only project we were expecting to belong for in terms of the construction of some of these projects. There's a few others that are also in here. Well, forty-two, as you're all aware of what's going on with that as well, which includes a, a grant and also some of the reservoirs that we're looking at. That have some issues that we need to. And finally, at the bottom, you see that we expected to spend in the year eighty-seven million dollars in capital improvements. However, we've already spent of that primarily in the regional plant, the seventeen million dollars. So, that, the remainder of that eighty-seven brings it down to sixty-three million dollars as of today. Those have interest expense in the middle of the page. It is taken into account the addition of a loan expected to take out, which not only is affected as an expense, but also an interest income right above on line. On line thirty-nine. And we'll explain how that's going to work when we get to that part of the item. Any questions on these two pages? So, looking at the financials through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, we look, looking at budget to actual. So, we, so far, we've been looking at what the budget is. And as you know, budget is a wish list of what we want to see for the year. Now, we're getting into what's actually been happening on the district comparing to this budget. Actual today, revenues, operating revenues is ten point nine million dollars compared to the ten point four that we budgeted for. Up from budget, five hundred and eighty-one thousand. Expenses are lower than what was budgeted for, seven point four versus seven point eight million dollars to the positive of three hundred and seventy thousand. And again, these are the items that individually for each department we budget for. On the expenses, it's primarily due to timing. Some of the expenses through December have not been received. So, we'll have to enter those in there. But, if you account the, those amounts, it's probably two hundred, three hundred thousand. However, that's still, we're still up from the budget in actual. So, for the year, actual net operating income, that's basically what the district sees as the primarily cash coming in. And you'll see that later on when we, when we look at the actual cash balances. Of three point six million dollars so far this year. Then, we get into the non-operating revenue, which includes those property taxes, connection fees that we basically have no control of. And then, again, operating revenue up from budget to two hundred and seventy thousand and expenses of seventy-six thousand for December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. So, what we're going to bring to you on Thursday for the study session, I just wanted to give you a quick of the many changes from the beginning of the year to where we are now in the budget. We've had to implement some regulatory compliance items in the wastewater department that are requesting a hundred thousand to cover those fees. Legal, a hundred and forty-five thousand, the nature of where we have been with the lawsuits. Those expenses have to be for those items to be able to cover what the lawyers are doing. Increase in relation to the inflation, lodge hauling, that took a huge increase over the, over the last year, requiring us to increase it by a hundred thousand. Electric utility, the same. You'll see electric utility actually has a trade-off in the next revenues of two hundred and twenty-five thousand for solar credits. That's the solar plant that we do have, that we have been collecting credits for in terms of revenues. Delinquent charges, again, we underbudgeted because we didn't know where we were going to be at at the beginning of the year. After the moratorium ended, we were back to disconnecting, cutting people off as required by the, by the state. Residential sewer service charges, two hundred and fifty thousand. Again, we did not know how many connections we were going to have at the. Many. And that's the result. Finally, that grant, the seventeen point. So, this is, represents an increase for what we already had.
And you do expect the seventeen seven million to be fully reimbursed? According to all the terms of the grant, we, you feel confident that it's fully going to be reimbursed?
Yes. And we're following the same guidelines with other similar grants like Proposition eighty-four, Prop one, that basically. Counting standards specify that if we have a grant that says you're going to get reimbursed by the state, especially by the state, more than likely, you will get reimbursed for those funds and therefore, we have to record them as a revenue and a receipt.
I am, I'm not trusting of them only because in my previous experience, I had a, we had a grant in a hospital that I worked with and then because of budgeting, it got pulled and the hospital lost the grant. And so, we lost a lot of employees and lost a lot of services and a lot of benefits because the hospital got for that. So, I just want to make sure that we're actually prepared to do this on our own and it's not going to increase our rates and it's not going to, to be something that costs the public a whole lot more money.
Correct. And obviously, from my standpoint, in terms of making it into the books, I'm following whatever guidelines we have in, in front of me in order to, to make those changes. For example, at the beginning of the year, it was almost guaranteed that that agreement was going to be signed. However, it was not signed, therefore, we could not book that entire amount as grant until it was signed and now we have more details. So, again, what I have in front of me is what dictates. Financials and now that we have a signed contract is what. Justifies the, the need to. Yeah, that's never happened to us, but, and I think one thing that should be noted too is that much of this money that we're talking about for this grant is through the federal programs and that money's allocated only to be used. They can't say, oh, I'm going to use it for salaries and benefits. Got to be used. In fact, that's how we became fortunate. Our project matched requirements of that particular. It's, they need to get it out. They're having a hard time. Because they have to match.
Well, like Mr. Macy said though, there's a lot of other people in line ahead of us and with us in that same program. So, I just want to make sure that we don't get bumped because we haven't gotten under there, gotten in, you know, gotten it all on the records, gotten that reimbursement stuff in there and started.
We crossed the Ts and dotted the Is.
Exactly. I don't want to lose out because we missed something.
All the time, we will. If anyone wants a break, this will be the perfect opportunity before we start talking about the capital improvement. Or do you want to continue?
Anytime somebody has to get up and use the restroom, they get up during the presentation. We don't have to have a special break.
Making sure. I address it and don't just not talking. I've got me water. So, next in the presentation, we're going to dwell into the capital improvement program, the cash flows and the installment purchase agreement that is going to be brought up in the work study session on Thursday. From last year's budget, we showed a, we started to show something new that we had not done in the past, a five-year plan for a capital improvement. We've had, we have been reactive to a lot of the problems that happen in the business. There's a pipeline replacement and the needs for some of the well infrastructure, some of the reservoirs. And we cannot continue to do that because it creates problems for our ratepayers. We have to think ahead in terms of five-year plan. We have started to do a water master plan update, a sewer master plan update and coming up as well, a financial, a long-term update as well that's going to look at all the financials. The guide, not only for the, for the staff, but also for the board and ratepayers to see where their monies and. We did this once before and it worked out very well. Been almost a year and a half with. Periodic meetings with. Subjects to the. They basically signed our financials. Right. Yeah, it was all community-driven. What projects do you want to see out in the community from the, your money that you? Now, typically, we do a water, we call it water, sewer, water and wastewater master plan every five years. Head bit behind, we're in the process of doing water and sewer. When I first got here, capital improvement program for water, not included, but we did make, we did catch up to that. New water and sewer master plan will include a capital improvement. Should be, it shouldn't change much. Always got a list of projects that we. Doesn't mean we have to do them overnight, but it's projects that we're saying, look, these road lines. Duct the wire, or we, we have duct the wire and it may be. Think we have to change those out. As our budget allows.
Mr. Wallam, can you try getting closer to that spider phone, please, when you speak? Thank you.
All right, I will. Of the projects that we have on the books, forty were identified that we needed to work on during fiscal year for a total of a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. However, I'm going to spend that in one year. We can, we don't have the ability to do that with Johnson. The revenue that we have on the books, however, we did identify eighty-nine million dollars of which has already been presented in the previous slides. Those numbers and where they were going to come from in terms of paying projects. The projects that have been approved by the board, every year, we do take this to four-year review and approval, recommendations and changes as needed. That's, staff provides backup for any of those projects and, and it's another discussion of where we. discussion of where we stand in terms of the, why we need those projects, uh, needed in that one year. Most, yeah, most of those we come back to you for your actual approval, the project, but process where it's kind of a, hey, you're gonna get to plan it, now you're gonna get to approve it before we actually. Uh, so again, this is budgeted, we are, this is what we estimate it's gonna cost. When we, uh, issue out the bids and the contractors, we, we come back for the board to approve those as well with, um, basically giving you all the control of particular items. Brian, these forty projects here, you just give me a list of what they are, we're ready.
Yeah, right there.
All right, good, thank you.
That comes right out, like, that's right out of our budget.
All right.
Yeah, you go online and look at it.
Public can too.
Here you see what makes up that one hundred and twenty-seven million dollars, and what we, uh, were planning to work in the current fiscal year, then made up about eighty-seven, um, seven million dollars. Or is the primary item here, that, uh, our regulation plan, area M two and the domain line.
Get me back to the master plan, that's where the engineers calculate lifespan, wells need to be had every, you know, uh, water tower needs to load it every five to ten years.
The other item in here that is obviously of significance is that, uh, new administration is second to that regional.
I thought that was only approved for engineering and architecture, I didn't realize that the board approved that to move forward with construction.
The last three items in the list are the well thirty-five, well thirty-four, and the inner tie, uh, that I brought to you last year. Going on to the next page, looking at our cash for the, uh, year, uh, I saw December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, comparing it to where we were in April when we presented this information, um, you can see it's a ten million dollar difference. The main reason for that, as you remember, in our net operating revenues, we saw an increase. Again, uh, is what creates that cash increase for the addition to the, uh, interest that we have been earning on investments, which is higher than we expected, and the, cursing the losses, uh, on those investments as well, but we do expect those to turn back around and losses as investments, uh, and accounts. Uh, but that's where we sit in terms of the, uh, the cash, million dollars in the Wells Fargo that we began, uh, in April, seven million dollars, and that's primarily what's been paying for these construction costs so far, operations for the district. Um, loan, again, that we are, uh, presenting is for those capital projects, um, and then, uh, a spreadsheet here coming up on where we sit with that cash and where it's gonna take us. Caltrust primarily is in there as a board, uh, you do have a, a reserve account, uh, policies that you've set up, and it is obvious, uh, a good thing to have in terms of when we need those funds, we cannot be reactive. We also have to have, uh, those funds set aside for those major projects in terms of but if considered the emergency is, the district's policy is to allocate one half of the current year's depreciation as a reserve to be able to replace those items if the emergency day, uh, we have those funds, and thus where we do not wanna feed the entire cash that we have for, available for those particular policies. That, that evolved out of the financial. And then again, that, that's a board policy and obviously a staff, we have to follow it and ensure that we allocate those funds and document how it's being done. So this takes us to where we, in terms of the outlook for the next, uh, couple of months, if that six million dollars is primarily in cash, set aside for operations. Um, at this point, that, the Wells Fargo bank account is gonna carry us through this month, um, that's what we, uh, showed in, uh, in June, and it's basically pretty accurate in where we stand. Uh, then you add those, uh, reserve short-term funds, that gets us to February, based on the expenses that are coming out from the regional fund and operations. Then you add the, uh, medium funds to that, and that carries us through May of twenty twenty-three, but the final operating cash, uh, that carries us through June of twenty twenty-three. Um, that is, again, not knowing when the state is going to start providing those funds out to the district as to why we need something in place before we start to hold back on certain projects and expenses. On the next page, if we were to get a ten million dollar loan to carry the district, that would carry us through December of twenty twenty-three, a fifteen million dollar loan would carry the district through February twenty-four, uh, and again, this is primarily waiting for the, the state to reimburse the district before we can start putting those cash back into, uh, production per se, into those capital projects. I continue, uh, on that, on those and operations, of course. And that concludes the presentation. Um, I can answer any additional questions you have. Um, the loan will be provided and, um, it's already been in the, uh, staff report, uh, for Thursday. The bank and our, uh, bond council will be here to answer any questions, the details you have, um, and also, uh, provide you additional information as to how we arrived with Wells Fargo as being the company we want to borrow those funds from.
The hundred and eighty-four thousand you mentioned as loan fees earlier, those would be the, the fees due upon signing the loan to the bank?
Yep.
And that includes their legal fees and all their bank processing fees and all of that? And then you had mentioned, when we had last spoken, three point nine-nine percent, that I'm noticing that, you know, the document said four point five percent, but then inside the sample document, it says it's up to ten percent.
It, uh, the, the way it's written is not to exceed four point five percent. And so the final rate will be provided on Thursday.
Okay.
When the agreement is gonna be brought to you for final approval. That is when they're gonna look at that, and it's a, a fixed rate, um, but as of, the report being provided and updated, those rates were changing daily, um, and however, on the twelfth is the final day where we're going to lock in on that rate. But it should be a not to exceed four point five, uh, which is what I wanted to put on the, uh, staff report to ensure.
And then we've made sure that the water board, the state water board, will be giving us the necessary approval for us to be leaning or, or assigning the facility income to the bank? They're prepared to sign that, that document for the bank as they're requi, as the grant requires?
They're, because there's only the revenues coming in, w- we only have to secure that it's enough to cover the one year for the loan. The loan, we're only repaying interest, uh, for the duration of the loan, and then finally paying an balloon payment, the entire fifteen million dollars come two years. So by then, we should have everything for the state in order to meet those requirements.
But the, the grant specifically says we have to receive water, state water board approval before, including any asset of the facility that we're building through the grant, in any loans or assignments, and the, the water board is prepared to do that for us?
Well, they're not required to in this case because it's only the revenues that we are securing, um, with the, uh, with the loan.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the loan says that we are not able.
Secured by net revenues of the sewer system.
Correct.
So that they could not touch the grant money until at which point sewer system is generating money?
Correct. So over the next two years, monthly, uh, charges from the bank is, is going to amount to fifty-six thousand dollars. We'll be able to come up with fifty-six thousand dollars from the sewer fund to be able to cover those expenses.
For each month?
Yes, until we have the money secured, um, to cover that fifteen million dollar. In addition, um, we also in- instituted a sweeps account, it's a money market account, whatever balance over three point five million dollars that the district holds each day will go, uh, to get reinvested and to, uh, funds allowed by California law, uh, and then those money get re, uh, brought back to the district. So the interest is supposed to be covering primarily the, the cost of the, that interest.
And since you are way faster at crunching numbers, and I'm, I'm absolutely positive you've already crunched this, what is the extra cost of this, this entire line of credit? What is that extra cost on top of the six, you know, the seventy-two million dollars for the whole project?
The cost of, uh, annual basis was going to be six and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, and again, you'll, in the budget report, we show that increase, but we also show that the, the result is interest income paid for itself. So it's in there, um, as the expense, but it's also because it's, it is going to get reinvested to cover those fees for itself.
Balance.
Yeah, we're, so the true cost to the district, uh, we're looking at around five hundred thousand in total.
Thank you.
Sure. Thousand dollars is gonna come from. Only if we're not able to, uh, pay the loan back, we are supposed to secure whatever comes next, uh, in terms of payments from the sewer charges, we're supposed to set it aside to then pay the bank. Uh, that's in the event that we are, something happens and we can't make those payments, that's what we have to do, we'll get it paid back.
And then I couldn't see it anywhere in here, and maybe you could just help me out. Is there a by-department budget? I'm really curious about our marketing department in particular, as to what we're budgeting and how many customers we have that we're budgeting. What I estimated from looking at the, through November is we've paid over seven hundred thousand for marketing just in this last year, January through November, and I'm just trying to understand what benefit we're truly seeing from that, and since we are gonna have a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, extra cost if we have to move forward with the loan, I'd like to see us get it from other places that might not necessarily be as required. I may have missed it, and I apologize if I did.
So this one spreadsheet covers by-department, uh, budgets, so it starts with customer accounts, what the, the budget is for customer service primarily, that includes the service department, that makes those out to customer room shutouts, we connect with all of that, uh, buildings and grounds, we have vehicle, central services, uh, which is primarily administration and an extra administration and ecology.
Oh, I see it, it was called public affairs, seven hundred and seventy.
Correct, yes, that's the one, that's the one. So that is primarily, um, Marion's budget, and it's out, the outreach that she's been doing with the committee, uh, which has created a great result in terms of.
It's also conservation and our participation with the other districts, participation with the urban water management plan, um, which we did as a, all participated in a valley-wide urban water management.
And that's the Hunter Johnson?
We can get you detail on it.
So the Hunter Johnson contract is actually.
Brian, we missed all of that. I, can you please get closer to that phone, or use the mic maybe?
But, don't worry from that perspective, as long as we hear it here in the boardroom, I think that's what's, bingo, just a workshop.
I do have two members of the public on the line.
Okay. And, uh, for, just to explain, because a lot of times it does confuse, uh, uh, there's one line item in here called boarder directors, and you start multiplying what each of you get paid on a meeting basis, it does not equal this amount. This is the staff time that it requires the, the district to meet the requirements and answering your questions, getting details for you, um, for salaries and, and the supplies that we have to get together for the, for the board, just.
I'm not even making minimum wage here from where I see it. I have to study all this stuff and everything, so.
I know, the last three days, my brain's jelly.
Right.
So will you provide me that additional information and breakdown on Hunter Johnson and how that whole program is, is working, and I'm not discounting our need to participate with the community and conservation and educating the public, but I am very confused as to what the additional C V strategies, Casey Dolan, Sprout Social, they seem to all do the same thing, and I'm, I'm concerned that that's money that could be saved, that we could be putting towards some of these expenses that are absolutely required, like repairing our wells and things like that. So if I could get a little more of that, as well as knowing what kind of membership we have to Sprout Social, 'cause it's anywhere from three hundred to five hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, but, and I, I think the, the, the public outreach includes conservation, so we have certain, so that's, you know, I mean, I think it's not just.
It's in here, it's a hundred and seventy-six thousand of that seven seventy is for that water conservation.
Thank you.
Break it down.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And, uh, we're available anytime you do have questions, do not hesitate to, uh, here's your questions.
I haven't, I haven't hesitated.
Well, I, we appreciate that, you know, and we work for the board, so.
I thought you were so shy.
No, I'm not shy.
No, um, we, we will be here to answer your question.
And I appreciate all of the work you've all done to answer my questions, and I know I've sent a lot out there, thank you guys for entertaining it as I'm, seeing all of you on it, so, thank you.
We thank you for the questions you answered. I think. Top all around.
Thank you. Um, he, uh, all right.
Move on to item, uh, five, general manager's comments.
Um, basically, we have two things here, I'm gonna let Arturo out, get into both of them probably, uh, you know, to correspond to what, uh, you know, even a little bit of, about what you're saying, what, uh, Director Duff has said, is they want to start again this community sort of financial long-range, uh, planning process. Um, and, uh, we're gonna move forward with that in, in, and then also that you wanted to know about this auto pay incident that we had, we're gonna have, Arturo can explain that to you, start out with the long-range plan and then go into.
Yeah, obviously for, because of everything that we have going on, it is important that we bring someone to give us the answers in terms of where we stand, uh, with revenues and expenses and cash and, and everything else, uh, and to help us go forward, not only with what staff recommends, but the board's decision, uh, and it does take, uh, someone, uh, outside of the agency to come in, look at all our numbers and, and talk us together and tell us where we're heading. Only with, uh, the finances for the district, also with regulations and meeting other agencies like.
This is where we'll basically address what you just said, is that, is that, you know, we put this in place, we get everything there for you. Where you wanna go with that?
Did put out the proposal last, uh, September, did get, uh, four responses, where, uh, we did lose, uh, CapTalis, um, and the contract, thirty-seven thousand, uh, are gonna be doing all of forecast and.
Are a.
Very well-known in the industry.
And they then create the community group, is that what you're talking about?
Well, we'll, they'll do it through us.
Okay.
But they will be there with the documents and with the.
Or, however, we do have a lot of customers that don't. Fact, right now, if you take your bill to a 7-Eleven, to a Walmart, to a Walgreens in the back of the bill, there's instructions that they can scan. That's why we wanted to make that change. And within making that change, we had a situation where the date of the bill was getting attached to the customer's account. When someone signed up for auto pay, it picked up that date as part of the account. Well, the next bill had a different date. Next bill had a different date. So now the, technically, we're not getting any more bills for that one account that you signed up for to, to be able to set up, process auto payment. That created the problem. We did reach out to our customers, those that were affected, not only by mail, but also phone calls. One of our board members was also affected and we were heavy communication with customers like Bowman, who was very outspoken about the, the problem and bringing attention. So we began that process immediately. Need to change with both pay near me portal and then basically help our customers, those that were affected, to be brought back in and immediately fix those where they had the issue. We still have a couple of them that continue to have a problem and we're working with them. Any late fees that were incurred due to the auto pay not taking effect were removed for all of those customers as well. So that even if they were not calling the district to tell us that was happening, we were ahead of that. So any customer that affected that issue has been corrected. We have some that had, where the account changed or they closed an account and they did not let us know, those were some of the, also were affected by that, but we also removed those fees. Uh, we are, they have corrected the, the problem.
Yeah, but, yeah, but you know, this is news. Part of the portal, it's part of our attempt to keep improving our.
I understand from our perspective, I'm.
And that brings me to my question, actually. How much did those late fees that we had to send back and, and credit back come to? What was the?
It was, don't have the exact number, but I can get it. 200 customers were affected and at a basic $5 charge minimum, you.
I know it's not a huge number.
No.
That it would be really wonderful to see the, the software tech, is that Uma Tech, I believe, that was working on that?
Uh.
Or is that someone else? Whoever it was that was, was our contract that created that, it would be really nice and good faith to see them return that to the district.
Correct. Pay near, uh, pay near me was the, where it created the problem.
Nice to see them asked to help the district out in that way.
We can do that, sure.
And also one more thing about that topic. Is it possible to do a more formal press release that is informational, that gives the accurate, one-time details of what happened and the phone number for the customers to call if they are those couples that have been left out and do one simple legally approved? Because one of the ratepayers that came to me with this problem had already consulted an attorney and the attorney was asking questions like, one, did all the customers automatically get refunded the money? And two, were they all properly communicated with, was all the customers communicated with? So seeing as how we have customers that are very willing to go to their attorneys, we have to make sure that what we tell the public has passed that legal muster and we're not opening ourselves up to another class action lawsuit or more problems. And so since you did everything the way you were supposed to do it, it would have been a very prime opportunity for us, when we first found out about this, to have released something factual to the public that, that notified them, this is what happened, we took all of these steps, we're going after the person who did it wrong and we've made it right. That's an opportunity for us to have been the good guys, something I wanted to offer as a suggestion.
Uh, bring us a press release. Yeah, just, I mean, you caught us by surprise too. We really were a third party here. These were, they were supposed to coordinate, you know, and, and my instruction was let's.
That's technology for you.
Amen to that. Yeah. But everybody, we did, it was, actually there wasn't a lot of money lost or anything.
Right.
And I think that, I think that 200 times our late fee is even a pretty high number because it, I didn't think it slipped under the radar for people. I got a text message and an email saying that my payment didn't go through and I was able to go and make a one-time payment.
Before the late fee was applied.
Right. So I think a lot of people, it was more an inconvenience rather than a cost of getting.
Yeah, and honestly, that is what it, that is what it came down to and customers complained that they should. Good point, good point. All good stuff. We do get reports daily from the company, I have to, staff, anything that gets returned, that same day, investigate it. If it is, address it. We're looking at those daily now.
Further on, you're. Nothing further from me, sir. Moving on to director's comments, we'll start with.
Um, great presentation, thank you. And along with what President Martin was saying about all of your questions, I think it's really good that we're a diverse board and we have different backgrounds and different specialties. Um, your experience with grants, I mean, I think you have a lot more things that you're going to see than maybe I and I'm glad that you're here and asking the question. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, it was very informative. I agree with what you say there, Ivan, and it's, I think it's working out wonderfully. Um, hey, President Martin, you made a comment that you really need this treatment plant?
Right.
And I imagine Councilmember Pye is still listening and it really has to do, if we don't have it, we don't have that growth in the community and it's important that we do work.
Good point.
With the council and the Water District does work together so that we can have that proper growth in the future of, of the community heads in the right direction because Water District here, I know in the past, has played a big part in some developments not being able to put in, be, be able to come because we didn't have the infrastructure for that. Water District didn't have the money to put it in. So this treatment plan is very important. And as Councilmember Pye, I do remember what went on there and some of it was the streets being torn up right after they were, were put in because of some water problems there with the mains and the lake team. There again, that was, some of that was because of, of government funding and the, and the timing was off. So hopefully we can work through all that and we can do a better job here and I, I'm happy to be here and, and to hear this presentation and how things are, have changed from years ago and the direction we're heading with all this is, is good news. My, my goal in the next four years that I'm here, when, when it concerns the budget is we never have to raise the rates to the customers. If I can get through four years of that, I'll, I'll be happy.
Well, you can tell us how we can avoid 10% inflation.
That's the thing, you have, you have to, you have to, I already got one lawsuit against the governor because he copied my, to give me credit for it. But, but.
The value is not much.
I know. It's much, I just, acknowledging that would have been nice. But, but you know, if you can, we don't, unfortunately, we can't control the, the inflation rate in the state of California and, and the United States for that matter and, um, we have to be able to have, uh, rates have to be our expenses, I mean, that.
Yes, that's why it's so important the way we're doing here is to, to keep those rates under controls and hopefully we can get the funding and everything that we need so we don't have to.
That's right.
Can I, can I just add just something so there's general knowledge and that is that I, um, at the CBWD meeting today, they were talking about the water rates that wholesalers are now paying up further in central California are astronomical. Um, seven-state pact, whether that goes through or the government imposes something as well as the nitrogen requirements, things like that and this one giant equation that is going to affect everybody at some point, I don't know. I, I, I believe water rates are probably going to go up everywhere, maybe not as much here as they are in north, northern and central, but I do know up there, uh, what they're paying per acre foot of water right now is way, way up there.
Of course, they're getting a lot of water now.
Uh, they are, but there's a lot of, it's a runoff, so.
Yeah.
Um, so just, just, you know, information to put out there that as much as me, what we may want to keep things stable, there are factors that are beyond our control, um, as of where we live.
You two guys just really rained on my parade, didn't you?
Sorry. Sorry Ted, I just.
I understand there is, is increases, but, you know, hopefully we can figure something out.
We'll try. Amber, we haven't heard much from you today, so.
Oh, nothing at all. I'm so sorry for that. Um, thank you all for the presentation, the time that it's taken for you to get this information. This has very much helped me get up to speed to be able to confidently participate in the upcoming budget reviews and in the decisions that we have coming up this week. So I really appreciate all of the hard work and, and forthcoming that you've had with all this information. Um, I too am very happy to, to be a part of this board and be given this opportunity to work for our ratepayers the way that we are and I think that we have a wonderful foundation that we are going to be able to build from, but I think that in reviewing things, there's also some places that we need to be more conservative. And I hope that we can work hard to find all of those places and be as conservative as we can so that we can move forward with all the necessary projects that, that you're talking about and those that we are hoping for, like the administrative building and things like that. Thank you.
I only want to make one final comment. Treatment facility and that is, we knew that to move forward on a project because of the rate of growth that was happening in, in. Um, and that's why we started this years ago. We're out of a way to finance it and so, to try and finance this, this, at the ratepayers, low-interest loans or however we were going to go. I think we've done a, kind of my job so far in, I don't think anybody could have anticipated that Desert Hot Springs, fastest-growing community, higher Coachella Valley, was crime rate either, but that's just me, I, I, but, uh, I was, I was shocked at that and I don't, I don't, I don't think that any. Kind of, kind of growth and that makes it even. Brian and Arturo, okay too. And if there's nothing further, uh.
Thank you, everyone. Good to have.